Good evening, Cedar Falls. Now I'll call this regular council meeting for Tuesday, September 6, 2022, to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk. Where's my gavel? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Ganfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn. Here. All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. And with that, for the first time, I will have members of the public who are part of civic organizations come forward as they desire to. It might be scout groups, it could be Civil Air Patrol. So groups are welcome to come forward to lead us with that honor of the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we have Barb Gregerson, who's with the Daughter of American Revolution to receive the Constitution Week proclamation anyway. So we're very glad to have you with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gregerson. Madam Clerk, do we have any -- excuse me, now I'll take a motion for the approval of minutes for August 15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. And do we have any agenda revisions tonight, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven on the consent calendar is being removed tonight. That's item number seven on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so then, moving forward into special presentations, again, we have Barb Gregerson, and this is for September 17 through 23, 2022, as Constitution Week. And I'll go over with her.
Thank you.
So this reads, Constitution Week. Whereas September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the 55 delegates to the 1787 Constitutional Convention. And whereas the U.S. Constitution defined for our nation the twin axioms of basic human equality and the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the U.S. Constitution is the garden of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas the aims of Constitution Week are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, to inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. And whereas it is fitting and proper to annully accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, as well as to the patriotic celebrations and educational activities which will commemorate the occasion by the Daughters of the American Revolution and other civic-minded groups. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in the city of Cedar Falls. And I do encourage citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the Constitution's authors through personal study and understanding of constitutional principles, and by vigilantly working to uphold the constitutional protections guaranteed to all Americans. Signed this 30th day of August, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green. So this is for you. Ta-da. Next, do you have a few words for us tonight?
Yes, I -- the Constitution of the United States of America functions under the Constitution. The United States of America functions as a republic. It is the oldest document, still an active use, that outlines the self-government of a people. This landmark idea that people had the inalienable right as individuals to be free and live their lives under their own governance was the impetus to the American Revolution. Today, the Constitution stands as an icon of freedom for people around the world. Mayor Green mentioned the Daughters of the American Revolution, and I'd like to give a little advertisement for that, since I'm a member. Every member of the Daughters of the American Revolution can trace their heritage back to an ancestor that took part in the American Revolution. My ancestor, Elijah Kingsley, was a private in the Massachusetts militia out on the western edge of Massachusetts. And in the year 1777, he marched off to three potential battlefields. The British never showed up, so he marched back home. And he died in 1801, and my sister and I have located his grave in a cemetery in western Massachusetts. His birthday was -- he was born September 20, 1744. The DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution, has served America for 132 years as its foremost cheerleader, known as the largest woman's patriotic organization in the world. DAR has over a million members with more than 3,000 chapters in all 50 states and 13 foreign countries. The DAR has long promoted patriotism through commemorative celebrations, memorials, scholarships, and activities for children and adults, plus programs for new immigrants. We thank you for this opportunity to shine a spotlight on this most important event in American history. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gregerson. The second proclamation I have tonight is recognizing September 19 through 25, 2022, as National Rail Safety Week. And I've done this on behalf of the Go Rail Committee, and I will do this every year. So National Rail Safety Week states, whereas 2,148 rail-grade crossing collisions resulted in 658 personal injuries and were responsible for 238 fatalities in the United States during 2021 alone. And whereas 1,151 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States resulting in 528 pedestrians being killed and another 623 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2021. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad rights of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening when near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, the United States Department of Transportation, and all state, local, and county railroad and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety and to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim September 19 to 25, 2022, as National Rail Safety Week in the city, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. Signed this first day of September, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green. And now, moving out of special presentations, we have a period for public forum where speakers will have an opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Does anyone wish to speak in public forum tonight? Good evening, Speaker Beach. If you just provide name and address for the record, please, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Western Home, 5018 Sage Road. Since I have not been here for a while and the last meeting that I think I attended, I believe that my want for bathrooms in Cedar Falls was given to the committee or given to the city, and I've not heard since, so I thought I'd just question if anybody looking for bathrooms anywhere. So that's my question. I'd like to know if we have any possibilities that could appear before too long. Okay, that's my big want, is bathrooms in Cedar Falls. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Beach. And right after this is staff updates, and we can get an update for you on that. Does anyone else wish to speak in public forum tonight? Yes, sir. Just name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is David Lamarche, 4024 Briarwood Drive, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I'm with the Cedar Valley Home Builders Association and the Chair of the Annual Parade of Homes Board. This year is our 20th Annual Parade of Homes. This is an important event that promotes local businesses, local home builders, local service providers, et cetera. It's going to be on September 15, 16, 17, and 18, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And tickets are available. If you Google the Parade of Homes, you'll find tickets available also at local Hy-Vee locations. There will be information about that. Have you ever -- you may have seen a big home as you've driven by and wondered what it looks like inside. This is a great opportunity to see some amazing homes that have just recently been built by our local craftspeople. And this year, we have nine homes in the parade, six of which are in Cedar Falls, and they range from over $1 million to more affordable housing, so a whole range. There's three that are in senior living communities. And additionally, there will be service providers advertising in the homes for local businesses. Myself, being an owner of a local business, budget blinds, will be participating as well. And then we'll have food and beverage trucks along the way, too. So it's a great date night, great time to get out, grab some friends. Tickets are available now. Just wondering if there's any questions.
When is it again?
It is September 15, 16, 17, and 18. So that's next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And there's hours. And if it would be okay, I can leave some brochures that give information on the times and where to get tickets.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the information.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. And yeah, and it notes under "Speaking of during public forum," the topics must be related to city operations or business as determined by the presiding officer. We've granted this every year because of the importance of housing in our community and especially that discussion of affordable housing. So glad to have this opportunity to enlighten residents on what the possibilities are there. Now, thank you, sir. With that, if there's no other comment for public forum, then we will close and go to staff updates. So we did have that question from Ms. Beach. Do we have any other staff updates along with that, Mr. Gaines?
I don't have any other staff updates, Mayor. I will just say that, if you recall, a couple weeks ago, it was referred, the public bathroom in the downtown area discussion referred to committee. And as you know, committee time gets kind of tight, so we're looking to have that potentially in the next meeting or two.
Okay, thank you. And I'll note, too, on the staff update side, Artipalooza is on this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. downtown. So if you can attend that, it's a great time. And also, Mr. Gaines, can you just briefly mention for our upcoming anniversary, work anniversary of 40 years, or one of our staff members? So that's --
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't -- I'm sorry, I put him on the spot. I decided that's where we're going to do this, to give those quick updates.
So Mayor, you caught me off guard a little bit.
Sorry about that.
I know we have plenty of long-term employees that have been here 40 years, but my understanding is we have an employee at the library that's been here coming up in 40 years, Renee Lewis. So long-term employee, and we'll be celebrating that a little later this month.
Okay, excellent. How about a round of applause? And for especially 40-year employees going forward, we'll make a note of that. It's a great time during staff updates. So if no other updates, then moving over to old business, we have item four, which is passing ordinance 3015 amending Chapter 23, Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, Relative to Electric Vehicle Charging Parking Spaces Upon Its Third and Final Consideration. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
It's a motioned and seconded. Do we have any additional council questions or discussion for it? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public tonight on this final reading? Okay, I'm seeing none. So it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
Ganfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Nay.
Dunn.
Aye.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then over into the consent calendar, we have items five through 11 minus seven. Does any council member request to pull one of these items out of the consent calendar? Okay, I'm seeing none. Anything from the public for the consent calendar? Okay, also none. So I'll read those -- or actually, I won't read those items. Items five through 11 minus seven. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. So that's approved and takes us over to the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the republic requests a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item from 12 to 25?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Sires.
Number 12.
Number 12, okay. Any others from council?
25.
25, for Darrell Cruz. All right, any others?
20.
Okay, any others from council? Any from the public? Okay, great. So I would ask for AV, is it possible to bring up those items on the screen? So just so we can flash those real quick. So 12 to 15 there, and then there 16 to 19, and 20 to 23, and 24 and 25. All right, so with those items minus 12, 20, and 25, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
Ganfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And over to 12 then. Councilmember Sires had a question on that. That is a resolution approving and authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, Health Insurance Fund, and Rec. Capital Fund relative to the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and seconded. Councilmember Sires, floor's yours.
Well, here's my thought on this. The money that we found should go back into the general fund. We were searching back in committee, the whole, in February to try and strip some of our budget. We stripped out about $300,000. We needed to strip out, I believe, another $500,000 so we could not have a tax raise. I believe it's our duty as financial people who can serve for our citizens that we could use this part of this 2.2 million to go ahead and relieve that burden so that our citizens don't have to pay a higher property tax. I don't -- I think when it goes back to the general fund, it says that we also need to use it for CIP, which I think is also wrong. I think the council needs to decide where this money needs to go, and my first thought is to go ahead and pay off that difference for the next year and not have our tax increase. That's all.
I think Councilmember Sires. Any other council discussion on that?
I have a question. So if we put the money back in the general fund, we relieve -- we could potentially relieve some future, next year's tax burden slightly, or a lot, depending. But we still need to come up with funds to put into the health insurance? So how would that work? Just out of curiosity.
So, you know, when you think about it, you're right. It could be in the general fund. It could be used for future general fund or property tax relief. However, keep in mind that by transferring money to the capital projects and using it for capital projects, which is right in the council goals that council adopts, that also helps relieve property tax burden because then you don't have to sell debt for those projects, also the health insurance fund. In the budget, you'll notice that, and you would have heard this in goal setting, too, that we didn't have to levy the whole amount for our trust and agency amount. We had enough under $8.10 levy. So by not putting this money in the health insurance fund, we will have to find money for our health insurance fund in the next budget cycle, which will be a property tax increase. So whether you use the money for projects and health insurance now and alleviate future property taxes on the CIP or your trust and agency levy, or you're saving the money in the general fund and relieving property taxes in the next year budget, it's really the same. It's still property tax relief.
So just to be clear, if this -- if these funds were just kept in the general fund, then next year in the budget for CIP and for other projects, we would need to cover that through property tax, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
My question is, we have emergency funds set up that we were going to take from when we were going to make the kayak trail. Why not take those emergency funds? The whole thing is, is to try and keep taxes down. And this money, we've been told that all extra funds had to go to a CIP project, but yet these have been put into an insurance fund. And I know we're self-insured, but the whole thing is, is my goal is to keep property taxes down. And if we keep them down now, it's always looking into the future, and that's my point. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember DeBoer.
Is the insurance fund still 4,000 short or 40,000 short? 400,000 short? It was 1.3 million, and we're putting 900 back in it? So it's still short, right?
Correct. So we're still going to see a loss in our health insurance fund. And, you know, I think the concern for us is that we're self-insured, which means you have to have certain reserves to keep it going. Unfortunately, this year, in the past few years, we've had significant losses on our health insurance fund, which really just is going to lead to more contribution the city's going to have to make into the health insurance fund moving forward, which will be on a property tax increase. So one way or another, you're going to have to maintain the fund and reserves if you want to remain self-insured. I think, you know, the thing for us, too, is we got to the end of the year, and Ron and I were having this discussion, is that we also understand that we could ask employees to chip in more to the health insurance fund to help, but we also understand in the market we're in right now that benefits are very important to employees, and it's one more cost that I'm not sure to compete with other people, whether that's the right decision to make, to do that when we're trying to compete with people for staff and people. So, you know, I think we understand how important the health insurance fund is. We're going to have to keep it solvent, and that mainly will be the city's burden as the employer to pay that.
But you didn't feel it was necessary to take that other 300,000 and put it in there also instead of putting it in the CIP?
We could. What we are kind of basing the 900,000 on is, I had said about how we didn't have to levy the maximum under trust and agency. So that's the amounts we didn't do. Over the last couple of years, we thought that made sense, that that kind of justifies that amount because we could have levied those. So that's where we got to the 900.
Okay.
And then Councilmember Sires.
But wasn't the difference 2.2 million, as it says here? It says approximately 2.2 million. The result was in excess in the general fund of 2.2 million.
Correct.
So you're putting the full money back into that?
No, in the memo, it talks about putting the 900,000 into the health insurance.
Because the problem is, is when we had these discussions back in February, we were nitpicking over, what, 300,000? It's just beyond me that we all of a sudden come up with 2.5 million. I know we have a big budget, there's only 2%, but I'd always like to see us save the taxpayer money. That's all. We don't have to go into it any deeper than that. I just brought it up so I could vote no, because I believe tax relief to our people now is important. That's all.
Councilmember Schultz.
So maybe a little bit off, but you made your comment, and I was thinking of it earlier. When do -- you say it's a choice, if we're going to continue to choose to be self-insured. At what point do we really -- do we have the option to go to a purchase, or is there a restraints to that?
Correct. We could at some point become a fully insured. We could do that, where we're buying insurance from a vendor to provide that. Why we've always avoided that is we've always thought that it's more cost-effective to be self-insured. We're not -- we don't have a profit margin built in to how much, you know, when you're buying insurance, you're also having to pay for that company to make money. So we've always thought that it's more cost-effective to be self-insured.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mrs. Rodenbeck, I'd like to see, what is the current balance of the reserves in the health insurance fund right now? I know we want to keep it strong, but what's it at?
So before we would have transferred these funds, we were down to 1.9 million. 1.9 million sounds like a lot, but when you have a loss of 1.3 million in one year, that's not going to take very long for those reserves to be gone. And so, I mean, quite honestly, the 900,000 might not even be enough, but it should be, I mean, at least for another year or two, or get us into this next budget cycle where we're going to have to talk about what do we want to do about employee benefits? What cost do we want to, you know, do we want to continue with the benefits we have, and what's that cost?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Earlier tonight, I talked about a number of challenging things that are going to come up this, this goal setting, and, and what you're looking at is, is this is kind of a precursor. We have some big budget items that are, that are going to be in front of us this coming goal setting. We're going to have to look at some very difficult decisions. Now, I can tell you, financially, the city's still in a really good spot. You, as a council, can probably do almost any project you want, but we can't do all of them. That's going to be the challenge moving ahead, so I think this is a great discussion for moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Gans. You mentioned goal setting. I would just want to note that this, this item coming forward isn't in a vacuum, this is a council direction, and this one's under 2A8. It says, "Deposit funds in excess of annual operations expenses, including released TIF funds, in a capital reserve account for projects such as the repurposing of City Hall, economic development, public land acquisition, redevelopment, or other one-time expenses approved by the City Council." So if the City Council would like to change that, that certainly is a goal-setting topic. But as it is for this fiscal year, this is what has been directed to, to staff. Any other comments for a vote? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then over to 20, this is a resolution receiving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the bid of Iowa Flatworks Incorporated in the amount of $49,143.69 being the lowest bid received for the 2022 sidewalk assessment project, Zone 5. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and Councilmember Schultz, you have some questions or comments?
So I've already spoken to some of our folks here, Mr. Shraggy, and about concerns where we've had sidewalk repairs done by not necessarily this contractor, it has nothing to do with this contractor, but concerns, particularly in Ward 1, where work took quite lengthy periods of time. It's been quite a time after the work has been done, where there's still piles of debris, concrete forms, other things left behind for months. And just want to assure our citizens that we take these seriously when we just don't blanket approve this, or any of these, without saying we're going to be responsible for taking care of these, so that's all.
Okay, excellent. So are there questions or comments? All right, then it's been motioned and seconded, or anything from the public as well, I'm sorry. So motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then it takes us to item 25, which is a resolution setting September 19th, 2022 as the date of a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission review of site plans in the downtown character district, CDDT. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and with any discussion about this, I won't want to keep this really nearly, narrowly tailored to the, the date, the resolution setting the date itself, rather than the, the topic of zoning amendments. So, Councilmember Cruz, you have some questions or comments?
Yes, exactly. I'd like to request that we table this until we finish the discussion that was started before this planning and zoning topic came out of planning and zoning regarding the type of majority needed to ratify or override P&amp;Z, whether it be a simple majority or a two-thirds supermajority.
Okay, so motion to table the discussion until after that, that decision is made, does that make sense?
Correct.
Or is that accurate? Okay. With that tabling, as a motion, it would need a, oh, here, it's up in here, go ahead. Mr. Rogers?
With the new council procedures that council adopted properly includes now a motion to postpone to a definite time.
Yes, okay.
Tabling is hyper-technical and could kill it, so I don't think that's what Councilmember Cruz has in mind, you just want to postpone the discussion.
Indefinitely postpone, or we got a specific date now?
To a definite time.
Yeah, it's a definite.
But it doesn't have to be a date, it can be after.
Defined as after the debate on the previous referral is completed.
That's, that's fair. If council's okay with that, so not an exact date, but after that other action occurs. So is that okay to read it that way? All right, so that's been motioned, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so to postpone to that time. Any further discussion needed? All right, so it's been motioned and seconded to postpone. All in favor, is it a roll call vote or a voice vote?
Voice vote.
Voice vote. So all in favor to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so let's see, show of hands for aye. One, two, three, four, five, and nay is two. Okay, so that does pass, which means that we will postpone that until after that other discussion occurs, and I'm not sure if it could occur during the same meeting afterward, or, or at the most appropriate time after.
Yeah, I, because I think the referral was to bring back to committee, so it wouldn't be council action until it got, made its way to full council, so it may be a couple meetings.
Okay.
So by doing that, we can settle this all with one vote? After?
You can, you can settle the issue that's coming for committee resolving, I think what you're talking about is eliminating the two-thirds supermajority requirement?
Yes.
That can be resolved, that, you'd have to take up this measure separately though after that.
So we'll, we'll be careful, like, we'd want to have it occur as soon after as possible. So if it could be the same meeting that we make that decision on the two-thirds vote and then have this right after, we'll do that.
Yeah, that's where I'm, was, my thought was that we were going with this.
Yeah, because we wouldn't want to let that linger.
Question.
Those decisions. Well, we're, it's kind of, we're, we're outside the space where we're debating items, so I don't want to get us into that habit of voting on things and talking about them.
Procedural point of order.
Okay, I'll take it.
As far as voting, as we're talking about the events and how they happen, if we change council policy, we wouldn't be able to, would we be able to vote that same night? That's Kevin's question.
So you're asking if, if hypothetically, council would move to amend the ordinances?
Yeah.
Eliminate the two-thirds majority, that's going to require three readings.
Exactly, so we wouldn't be able to do it on the same night.
To your point, it, it may be a while.
Yeah, but we would be able to do it on the same night if it failed, so we should just assume that it's going to be separate nights.
I would say so.
Your point's well taken.
Cool, thanks.
Right.
All right, so with that, that takes us out of the resolution calendar, moves us over to ordinances. 26 is passing an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to the adoption of revised City Council meeting procedures upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. I am actually the, kind of the speaker for this, I'll give the 30-second infomercial. We are, or I'm asking for a change to the city code in order to just remove a few items in there that are duplicative of what's in the council meeting procedures, and in some cases, it's, it causes a bit of confusion to have it in both places, specifically the standing committees listing them in both spots. So I've worked with the city attorney on this to remove items that just aren't necessary in the city code, either because they're duplicative, or in the case of the, the meeting, the parliamentary procedures, that's all covered in our, our meeting procedures document, so it's just not necessary to have it in city code anymore. So I'm happy to entertain questions that you might have in particular, or any amendments that you might want to propose. So with that, to council.
Mr. Mayor, that, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Gaffield.
That council policy is 1211, is that correct?
Yeah, 12, excuse me, CFD 1121.
1121, sorry. And 1121 requires a majority of council to change it at this point, is that correct? To set, by resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that.
Yep, so, so the, the code itself requires only a council majority, but it requires three readings. The, the book, the meeting procedures can be changed on, on one meeting, but it also requires a two-thirds vote to, to occur. So it's a little bit, I guess, a little bit more locked in.
Because it doesn't have that third reading.
Right.
Got you.
Or because, it's locked in because it, it requires a higher threshold of votes in favor.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, as I was reading through this, I guess, I find very frustrating when you go into, you know, a Google security thing where it says, "Are you sure you wanted to take that action? Are you sure? Are you sure?" This is that redundancy that we need to remove. I would go so far as to move to also strike Section 269, since the structure and numbering of those committees is being removed from Sections 272. It's already covered in admin policy 1121.
Yes, it, under, I was looking, as you're talking about that, under 67, Rule 67, it says, "Number of committee members, the standing committees of the council shall consist of all seven members, all special committees shall consist of five members each unless some other number is specified by the council." So exact duplicate language.
So move to strike that as well, in addition to 273 through, 273?
Okay, so that would, that would be a, a motion to amend, or an amendment.
Correct.
So it's been motion to amend to also remove item 269 from the code. And is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, and any discussion for that, that amendment? Okay, seeing none?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Just since we're, you know, amending on the fly ordinances, are there any legal ramifications or any complications you see with that, Kevin? I know the duplicate language is there. I, I get we're trying to be clear, I just want to, is there anything you're seeing?
Generally, what you say for ordinances are foundational rules, and this is a foundational rule of how many are in standing committees, and generally you leave something like that in ordinances. It's not mandatory by any means, but on the one hand, if you want to change the ordinance to a different number, it only takes a majority, but three readings. If it, if it defaults to the rules of procedure, it only takes one meeting, but two-thirds vote, so I guess pick your poison there. I don't mean to say poison, pick your, pick your avenue.
It can be poison.
Okay, so motions on the floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, yes.
This is the, Kevin, just kind of a curiosity. We're, we're talking about taking out redundancies in the code. It seems like no harm, no foul that they're in there at the state or federal level. I mean, you got to refer to other portions of the code. Does that, I mean, does it, what are we, are we helping a whole lot? Just, I mean, if something's absent in an area and the layperson reading this will say, oh, they didn't realize in another section to, to other comments here that there's something relevant to that. Are we creating a situation where, you know, something might happen with the general public and not be aware?
You, you ask a great question about codification. Where, how much do you duplicate? For instance, in the state code, there are statutes, of course, but there are also administrative regulations. Sometimes it's word for word. Usually the regulations fill in the gaps between the statutes. Same with the federal code and the code of federal regulations. So the danger with leaving them together, parallel, is you feel like you change one thing and you forget to change the other. That's, that's the danger, then they're conflicting and you're ambiguous. That's why when I said fundamental, you leave only the most fundamental things for the ordinance if, if you want to address other things like procedure in the, in a separate set of documents. I can tell you that I'm not aware of any other city that includes its council procedures in its ordinances. So, so I have no concerns from a legal standpoint. Your question's a great one, that's always the give and take on how much detail you leave in the ordinance versus putting it in the regulations. It's your call ultimately.
And that's, I love the point, that's why I, I added in for that new Section 246, the establishment of council meeting procedures. Like, we always already had them, but I don't want the public, or somebody who's just, as a layperson, reading through this to not realize, we have an entire separate document that talks about these things. So that's where it does refer the public over to that, that separate document that just says, "The Cedar Falls City Council shall establish for itself an update from time to time, rules for the conduct of regular meetings, committee meetings, and work sessions. These council meeting procedures shall include parliamentary guidance particular to the needs of the council." So hopefully people will know, okay, let me look at this other document. Any other questions?
One other question, and I'm, because I don't have it in front of me and I'm just going off memory, is there somewhere in there that's stated, or would it be beneficial just to state, instead of stating a number of standing committees will be five, that we just say standing committee members will be, will follow the council procedure or council admin policy? Therefore, we're being more broad in directing you to an item? Is that helpful, or are we just really like picking at straws here?
Yep, I understand the question. My answer would be, you're just more or less pointing your finger at these other
Things.
Rules which would, would apply anyway.
Yeah.
I don't think it's quite necessary.
Fair enough.
And to your point, item B under Section 268 does say explicitly that. They'll be established by this Section 246.
That's what I was wondering, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, there's a clear line of how do we govern ourselves. This was just a redundant line that didn't need to be in both.
I'm good.
Estimation.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments before going to a vote?
Just to clarify, then we'd be striking 269 and then changing Sections 2-69 through 2-102 to be reserved. Those are the only two edits on the amendment as presented earlier tonight. That's just a numbering, because Section 269 would be removed, therefore then added to the latter reserved section.
Yeah, that's a code editor thing, I'll take care of that.
Just making sure it was clear.
I see, yeah. And so I believe now we're, we're still at the amendment, correct?
Correct.
So this is, the only thing on this item is not to approve the final item yet, but just to amend, to strike Section 269. So motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. So now we go back to the original motion, which is the approval of the changes to the, the code, including removing Section 218, or 21, excuse me, 269. Is there any other final discussion or questions on that? And I'll just say, after going through this and going through the meeting procedures, I'll be very glad to be done with coding. I, I think we'll be in a great position for council in years ahead, and they will not know what we did, but they will be glad that we did it. So with that, it's been motioned and seconded, any comments from public on this? So motion and seconded requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then over to item 27, that's passing an ordinance amending Chapter 23 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to prohibiting parking on portions of utility parkway upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
The motion and seconded, and I believe Mr. Wiki able to answer any questions that we have, and if he could just give us a real brief synopsis of what this amend, or the change request is about? Floor's yours, sir.
Sure.
there, but we evaluated that request and we deemed and recommend that parking be prohibited on that south side to relieve some of the congestion issues that can happen on that corridor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiki. So, it's been motioned already for this and seconded, so is there any discussion that we want to have on it? Questions from council or from the public? Okay, seeing none, then motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then over into item 28, is a motion to approve bills and claims for September 6, 2022, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion? Any from the public? It says it's been motion and seconded and also requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then over into item 28, is a motion to approve bills and claims for September 6, 2022, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion? Any from the public? It says it's been motion and seconded and also requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And over to council referrals, do we have any referrals tonight? Okay, seeing none, then do we have any updates or announcements tonight from council? Floor's yours. Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
I guess it's more of a question, I don't know if there's really a good place to throw a question, but I'll do it now. Referring back to item 19, we discussed approving a new duplex, and reading through the language, it talks about where a substantial improvement will trigger planning and zoning presentation and approval. Is that just because it's in the overlay, College Hill overlay?
Correct.
Okay, so then, take that scenario and bring it down to our new downtown ordinances where we have a new residential building being built, that's not considered an overlay, so there wouldn't be P&amp;Z review?
The former ordinance, when we had the C3 and then we had the downtown overlay, used that same terminology, but we've replaced that with the downtown character district, so no, it's not in there now.
Okay, that kind of presents a concern that we had an overlay for, and we have it throughout town for various reasons, usually threat of overbuilding or what have you, but the new, the new character districts don't have planning and zoning review in what could be problematic residential construction. I mean, we have it on the hill, and it does its job, seemingly. It talks about architectural compatibility, the previous home was built in 1947, do we have to build, and this is the debate that goes on, do we build to 1947 design, neighborhood character, changes with the size of the city, expanding and contracting? So, to me, it's another reason why we want, in the downtown visioning area, P&amp;Z oversight, and it's just a comment that we can have another referral down the road on, potentially, but just something to think about here. Thank you.
Any other updates or announcements? Yes, Councilmember Schultz?
So, Mr. Sheets, could you address then, P&amp;Z has made the determination that in the characteristic, that those oversight is a redundancy of what they've already determined. Is that the impression that I get, that they've already made the decision in the form base that's saying, here's what our requirements are for this area, you meet those requirements and you can move on?
Correct, that discussion when the downtown code was adopted, and then when it was referred back in January about P&amp;Z review, they talked about this item again, about how detailed the new ordinance is, and it's less subjective and a lot more objective about how the criteria is met. When you have a subjective ordinance, as was mentioned with the overlay where it's compatibility, those are the types of terms that can be very subjective, and that's why P&amp;Z review is involved there.
And that's their continued voting, the way they're aligned with is that they've made that decision, they've reviewed all the possibilities, and they said, here's our requirement in this character district, and if the developer meets those, they don't need a site overview because literally, it's already been done, it's just been pre-done and it's written in there. Am I wrong there somewhere?
Correct, I'll, just as an example, one thing that had been debated in years past was the height, and how is that comparable, and how's that judgment made, and so, always led to a lot of discussion about what the height of buildings downtown should be. Well, code's very specific about that now, in certain areas, it's a maximum of four stories high, and then if you go out further, the maximum goes down from there, specific to the character of those certain areas.
I guess that's where I want to get, I probably should have changed or not voted as I did, but I did, but I want to put this stuff behind me, especially in my ward, where I don't want to deter any development when we've already got this set.
All right, point of order, Mr. Mayor, this is council updates, not council debates, so I would like to move on.
So that's, and that's something, looking at council updates and announcements, I just want to read that, it's Rule 525, where it says, "Members may use this time during a council meeting to ask for updates from staff on projects or issues, and to make announcements to the public and to counsel on civic matters. The presiding officer shall ensure that such discussion remains in compliance with the Iowa Open Meetings Law. As a safeguard, no motions will be entertained," which we didn't do. "Matters requiring deliberation by council or final actions shall instead be submitted for inclusion on a first, future council meeting or committee meeting agenda to ensure transparency and public participation." And your point's well taken, I'm concerned that we are starting to get a little bit more into something that really is, it's a good debate, but it's not really something that's geared towards council updates, I would want to get into a broad discussion.
No offense intended towards, or Cruz, just, it's not the time.
Yeah, I'm just, in my one term prior to this term of council, we had quite a, quite a few opportunities for council members to ask a question, for lack of a better place to do it.
Yeah, and that's, that did, you did that, very well.
I mean, that's, and so, what you just read from, what, 525, it didn't outline the opportunity to ask a question of clarity, because otherwise, then I'd have to petition to get something on the agenda as a resolution or whatever, and it just doesn't fit to ask a question so everybody can hear it. So, do we want to relabel council updates, announcements, and questions?
I had no issue with your question, I just, I felt like it was getting to a point where you guys were debating back and forth, or?
I could respond to what you had said.
Yeah, I get it.
We could all go on and on and?
Exactly, so, my point is just, point taken, question asked, now it's not the time to get into that discussion, that's all.
On that, we handle meetings really well, so I just want to make sure that if there's time's available and we have that opportunity, that we're, we stick to the rules that we've set for ourself, and I don't have, I don't have any concerns about questions like you brought up, it's really my determination, and then if council overrides, they can change it, but I do want to make sure that we're using that time appropriately, and I appreciate the questions to staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one other question for update, I know we heard from Ron earlier in regards to the bathroom situation that Mrs. Beach had brought up, I wanted to see, I know there was a little bit of motion around, sending some pictures around, so I'm not sure if it's Chase or who, the Little Red Schoolhouse door and repairs there, is there any updates you care to give, or is something ordered to repair that bathroom situation?
The door's been on order, we're still waiting for that.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to make sure I got that clarity I forgot to ask earlier, thanks.
And knowing that staff has talked about this a little bit, I don't want to put on the spot too much, but there had been some concerns or questions about the Place to Play Park, and so like, what our activities are there, and could we do just a 30, or maybe like a two-minute infomercial on that one, of what, or some of the actions are there that the city's been doing?
Playing musical mics, so, we have had some concerns from some neighbors out in the Place to Play Park, and so, what we've asked is our Public Safety Department to actually kind of, I don't want to say necessarily step up enforcement, but maybe show a presence out there. I think over the weekend, I didn't get a, quite a brief from, from Public Safety Director, but I know that Chief Howard was going to have some officers stand out, go out there, actually interact with the public, show a presence, but, and they have been doing that since end of July, I think they've been on patrol out there a number of times, so, yeah, I think that's what you wanted to cover, Mayor, so.
And I've been out there, certainly encourage council members to go out, it's a beautiful park, it's great to see the kids out playing, and I think if you, if you talk, or listen to the parents to see, like, if they have concerns or what they like about the park, it's really enlightening, and I think offers some great comments for us to consider, we will look at other playgrounds and parks, like, we're going to be doing the Sartori Park update, so, things that parents love there. One of the concerns that I found is for older kids, that we don't have signage currently that limits the age of kids in that park, but it's, there's parts, like with the basketball hoop, it might just not be appropriate for older kids to be playing in there when it's meant for younger, so I would ask for the people listening, just keep a, keep an eye out for the ages, to realize that it's really meant for younger kids to be in there, and that might offer some opportunities for us to offer some additional features, or maybe a basketball court someday, looking down the road, for older, like, the teens that are looking for things to do in that area, because I've chatted with quite a few of them, they're good kids, and they're just looking for things to do, and that's the easiest place to get to for them. Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, along that lines, my understanding was that the, due to the popularity of the park, we're getting families from outside the general area of that park coming there, and maybe over, over congestion, overpopulating the park, is there a capacity, I don't know what kind of issues? I mean, we can't really control that, but, I mean, that lends itself to making more parks like that, I suppose.
I don't know that I would say that it's an overpopulation of the park, is there, is there a high use? Absolutely there. Is it a destination park? Absolutely. There's, there's folks from all over the community that come there just because of the amenities that it offers, and I think with that, you get some challenges at times, so, but yeah, it's a fantastic park, I know our Public Works Department is working with the neighbors to make some improvements, to keep the park very active, and trying to see what works there, and just like anything else, trying to see what works, and some things that don't, and try to modify those so they work better for the community.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other announcements or updates for tonight? Date requests? Okay, so with that, I would consider a motion to approve, or, excuse me, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thanks.